This conference will now be recorded.
All right. We reconvene from executive session into open session at 6:43 PM to act as deemed appropriate in city council's discretion regarding a consultation with legal counsel and possible action concerning any regular meeting agenda item.
No action.
B, consideration of a potential interlocal agreement with Travis County.
No action.
E, consultation with legal counsel regarding a request to purchase real property located at 20801 Rawhide Trail from the city.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we have the city staff advertise this land and accept bids for sale.
I will second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Oh God, I hate this part of the meeting. Any further, any further comments? All right, place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
And myself is aye. Motion carries unanimous. All right, and D, consultation with legal counsel regarding a water service agreement with Draper Estates.
No action.
All right, so we move into our regular council meeting. Senator, please note, we have all of our council members in attendance tonight. We will start with citizen comments. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses to specific questions, any items not on the agenda. I have not received any requests from citizens to speak. However, if there's anybody on there that would like to say something real quick. Yes, Paul Roberts. You're muted.
Good evening. Hi, everyone. I don't, it's kind of a late thing here. This is a you're not going to be able to do much with this image like this, but I just wanted to submit to the city that I read the Wall Street Journal and Bloomberg and a lot of different financial newspapers and periodicals and something that's been kind of making the rounds in the last couple of months is the problem with payday loans. And something to consider, if you guys think that maybe it's the public sentiment, a lot of people think that payday loans are bad because it's hard to pay them off. If there's anything in the zoning or perhaps in the city code that could prevent payday loan business from coming to Lago Vista, it might be something that I think would be good for our community to not have those types of businesses located in Lago Vista. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Yep, we can look into that. Anybody else? All right, we will move into items of community interest pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0415. The city council may report on any of the following items. A, expressions of thanks, gratitude, and condolences. B, information regarding holiday schedules. C, recognition of individuals.
Yes, please.
E, reminders regarding city council events. E, reminders regarding community events and health and safety announcements. I have several, beginning with the Community of Unity Rally tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock. That will be right outside City Hall here, in between the library and City Hall. And that is just a rally, rally that I am holding to discuss Lago Vista coming together as a community. I am asking all leaders who would like to join me, please do so. It's tomorrow at 10 o'clock in the morning. You don't have to speak or anything, but if you would like to show up and stand with me, please do so. And it's open to the public. It's, it's an outdoor rally. We will be practicing face mask and social distancing as best as possible. I saw a report from the Wall Street Journal today that the uptick in COVID-19 has nothing to do with protests. So it will be an outdoor rally. So if you care to attend, please do so. Otherwise, I'll be recording it and we will put it on YouTube and you can watch it at a later time at your convenience. It is also Juneteenth, which is the nationally recognized celebration of the Emancipation Proclamation. It's not the anniversary of the proclamation, but it is the recognized celebration of the proclamation. That is also tomorrow. This weekend, the state, I believe it's the state, it's not the county, I believe it's the state, is holding a free COVID-19 testing through the Texas Department of Emergency Management. That'll be at the Performing Arts Center. We're in the parking lot there at the high school. It is Saturday and Sunday. If you'd like to make a reservation, there's information on our city website where you can make a reservation. Otherwise, you can walk up and get tested for free. I believe there is a screening process in place. So if you walk up and go through the screening and they don't feel like you need to be tested, you probably won't get tested. But they're there and it's free. It's been advertised, I know, coming out of Cedar Park today, all down 1431, there were street, those trailers with the, that are lighted sideboards. The state has put them all along the side of 1431 advertising this event in Lago Vista. So we may get a good influx of people from outside of Lago Vista this weekend coming to get free COVID-19 testing. Just make that note. If you're driving on Lowman Ford Road Saturday and Sunday, there may be a bit of additional traffic coming in and out of town. That is all I have at the moment. Anybody else? No, Josh, anything from staff?
Mayor, the pool will this weekend.
Is there any update on, on this patient?
I'm sorry, David, go ahead.
No, I asked about the census. Is, are we getting more people signing up on the census?
Slowly. I haven't looked at the percentage recently, but it's slowly increasing.
So Mayor, all I was going to add is that the city pool will open this weekend and that the library opened on Monday with some restrictions. So we have sent out a press release that shares some of the restrictions with the community. So hopefully people will be able to use those services. The library's been active in curbside functions. So hopefully we'll get some people to the swimming pool safely and to the, to the library.
All right, anybody else?
Mayor Paul did add in the chat that he has 100 extra K N95 masks that he could bring to the Community Unity Event tomorrow. And so I would just say, Paul, if you're, if you're going to be there, definitely bring them. That would be a value add that if anyone wants a mask, I think that's a good benefit.
I'd be happy to.
Yes, agreed. Yeah. Oh, and just so you know, I got the email, I mean, literally at six, at 5:55 today, I got the email from Travis County that as of midnight tonight, our county judge is implementing the new order that businesses will be required to come up with a plan to address wearing masks. So you can expect that anything within Travis County, any, going into any business in Travis County, you will be required to wear a mask. The way it is presented is the business will be held liable if they are not following the judge's order. Individual people will not be liable, but the business will. So you can expect your businesses to fall in line and that starts at midnight tonight. Anybody else? All right. We will move to action items. Number three, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding Resolution Number 20-1846, a resolution by the city council of the city of Lago Vista, Texas, providing for a public hearing and notice of intent to issue special assessment revenue refunding bonds, Series 2020, to Serra on Lake Travis Public Improvement District Improvement Area Number One Project as required by the city's Home Rule Charter, providing an effective date and containing other matters relating to the subject. Bart, would you like me to go ahead and open up number four as well and just discuss both of them at the same time?
Yes, yes, Mayor, I think that'd be appropriate.
All right, so I will read number four into open session. Number four is discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding Resolution Number 201847, a resolution by the city council of the city of Lago Vista, Texas, providing for a public hearing and notice of intent to issue special assessment revenue and refunding bonds, taxable Series 2020A and tax exempt Series 2020B, to Serra on Lake Travis Public Improvement District, major improvement area project, as required by the city's Home Rule Charter, providing an effective date and containing other matters relating to the subject. And we have Bart Fowler in attendance and I will turn this over to him. And just to start, Bart, when was the last one that we did? I'm trying to
The last, the last Serra Pid bond issuance we did?
Yes.
2018, 20, actually, let's see, Tom, Tom Morris, your financial advisor on the phone, are on the line as well. I believe it was January of 2019, wasn't it, Tom, or was it 2018?
20, their series 2018. I can pull it up on my screen here in just a sec. It was for Improvement Area Number Two. And
Yeah, the reason I was asking, I was if any of our council members were, were council members at the time we did the last one.
Well, with GoToMeeting on my computer, it's moving very slow. Let's see here.
Dave, Arch, and myself were all on the council when we did the last
Yeah, I believe that was, let's see. Yeah, I believe that was.
I was on the council when they paid us back some money.
Okay, so it's not new for everybody, but
I'm familiar with them.
Yeah, Tom, I've got January 11th, 2018 would have been the
Right, yep.
And Mayor and Council, just for the record, mine is Bart Fowler with McCall Park, Kristen Horton. I'm happy to serve the whole bond council. As, as the mayor mentioned, this is an additional issue with the bonds. What's being considered tonight is what's required by your charter, which is publication of a notice of the, your intent to issue this debt and publication of a public hearing that will occur on July 16th, the date we anticipate selling these, these bonds. There are technically three series of bonds being considered. Tom Morris is on the phone or on the line. He can talk to you on the line about the actual financing structure if you'd like. But tonight, all you're considering is publication of the notice issued, three series of debt. One is for refund the existing Improvement Area Number One bonds that are currently outstanding. We can do that to save a little bit of money, restructure a little better. And the other are two series of debt for the major improvement area, which is the remainder of the series that has to be developed. That is also to refund the outstanding debt on that portion of the Tera Pid area, as well as issue a little bit of new money to reimburse the developer for the amount you've already contracted to reimburse them for. There's going to be a lot of work that we have to do between now and July 16th to get ready to sell these bonds. We have a good team in place to get that done. But tonight, it is just authorizing publication of the notices that are required by your charter so that we can sell bonds on July 16th. That's kind of an overview, Tom, there may be some folks you'd like if you'd like to say anything else.
Well, one of the, in addition to that new money, the refundings are to restructure the MIA bonds and will completely eliminate the indenture provisions. The indentures that were executed back in 2012 for both the MIA bonds and the IA1 bonds will go away and be replaced by these new indentures. The indentures that were done back in 2012 were back in the early days of Pid financings and they had a lot of, a lot more strict provisions that have been loosened up over the years as people have gotten more comfortable doing these Pid bonds. So it's a multi-purpose refinancing. It's going to restructure that. On the IA1, there's actually savings, present value savings. On the MIA bonds, there'll be significant actual dollar savings in the early years, but then we're stretching the debt out. So the debt service is, is going, there will be debt service in later years that wouldn't otherwise be there. So the reason, I guess, let me see, the reason for the splitting of the MIA into two series is one of them will be taxable and the other will be tax exempt. And the reason for that is the current tax law restricts current refundings and only part of the bonds may be currently refunded, meaning that they're redeemable within 90 days. The balance of the bonds aren't redeemable until next year. So to get around the tax restriction on doing that refunding, we set up to do a taxable refunding. And interest rates, even on the taxable side, are a lot more attractive now in this, in this current era of low interest rates. So it's, it's, a lot of taxable refundings have been done ever since the new tax law came in. That's basically a nutshell of what's going on with the, the Pid bonds.
All right, hold on, second, Tim, Frank, hold on just a second. I'm sorry, I probably should have followed this up earlier. Because we do have three new council members and I don't know about the people in the audience, if they were around in 2018, could, could you just give a, a brief overview of the PIN pod? So the people sitting out there watching on TV know what we're actually talking about as far as these PIN pods?
Bart, or I could probably do that. I'll give a brief summary of how they work. Basically, a Pid is a public improvement district, which is an area of land designated by the city. The city maintains control over the, the public improvement district, which is in contrast with a mud or a municipal utility district, which has its own governing body, separate and distinct from a city council. So Pids became popular for, that's one reason. Another is there's a whole lot more type of improvements that may be done beyond what a municipal utility district could do. And once the area is designated, then the improvements can get financed through the issuance of these public improvement district bonds, which are special obligations of the city. They are not general obligations supported by your ad valorem tax. Instead, they're supported by special assessments against the property owners benefiting from those new improvements within that public improvement district. That's a nutshell summary. Bart, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
No, no, I'm happy to answer your questions, but I think you described them well.
My question. All right, we'll start with Tim.
Tom, I'm an early purchaser out in the Tera Lakeside, so I've got one of those Pids. And along with a few other folks, does this affect any of those that we are currently paying back now?
I believe it would. You're, are you must be, you, you own property in Improvement Area Number One, I would suppose?
I do.
You will be affected. You, you're, you were affected by the initial bonds and you'll be affected by the refunding bonds as well, which in the case of the Improvement Area Number One bonds, I believe you'll see a present value savings and a lowering of the assessment. We haven't finalized the numbers yet. Tonight is basically kind of a preliminary step. We wouldn't finalize it until the pricing of the bonds. I'm going to pull up on my screen right now and just, I can give you a general idea if the program will ever open up. Here it is. And I can tell you what the latest numbers look like. Let's see.
Also, Tom, while you're looking that up, I know some of the neighbors paid in full closing with this all back then.
They, they, once you've paid the full amount of the assessment, you're not paying assessments anymore. You aren't going to be pulled back in as a result of of the refinancing. There will, there's no more assessments on a property once it's, once it's, once the assessment has been paid off.
Okay.
I'm sorry, my, my computer is so slow.
It's all right, you don't, I don't need a number. I just wonder whether I was going to impact the early purchasers.
Yeah, no, the early purchasers would not be impacted. They're not receiving assessment bills anymore. You're simply paying property taxes and that would be it.
Beg your pardon?
I said, you're obviously still going to be paying the regular ad valorem property taxes that the city levies every year, but no, no assessments, any refundings that are done with let's see, I'm, I'm pulling it up right now. It's as slow as can be. There, there's going to be an average of somewhere in the $35,000 to $45,000 a year for the entire Improvement Area Number One. That would be divided up among the property owners. That's based on current interest rates. So, you know, it may not make a big difference for any individual homeowner, but there is some benefit to it. And the other benefit is obviously the city will have oh, go ahead.
Let me clear something, let me clear something up, and I don't mean to dominate this, but I do have a number of folks that I've been involved with. I still pay a Pid and it's not part of our taxes.
Right.
And we deduct it as a tax. So would you want to clear that statement up, please?
The, it's, it's called a special assessment and it is not a property tax. It is a special assessment. It very much looks like a tax, feels like a tax, smells like a tax, but it's not called a tax. The law made it pretty clear that it's not only not a tax, but the way it is calculated is not done similar to a tax. A tax is simply based on property valuation and an assessment is based on several factors that your Pid consultant takes into account and that the indenture and all the legal documents take into account, square footage, location in relation to the lake, et cetera. All these various things go into the calculation of what assessment attaches to each property. So it, it acts like a tax, but it's not.
I understand that. Okay. Thank you.
Right.
One other thing to keep in mind, it's different. A property tax applies to the entire city, to everybody in the city, property owners, business, residential, et cetera. The assessment is unique to what's inside that area within the public improvement.
Right. I live it. I understand it.
Okay.
All right, go ahead, Frank.
As Tom rec, remembers, I was a staff guy trying to pull together 2,000, 3,000 pages, put the Pid together. I hope I don't dominate. Is there going to be additional debt added?
Not, not on the Improvement Area Number One. On the major improvement area, there's a $700,000 purchase. At least that's the current number for the rights of way that was predetermined the years ago that the Heinz development is, is seeking repayment for the rights of way and it's looking to be about 700,000 plus the associated costs with that piece.
Yeah, now, now we're, now we're getting into domination, guys, and I'm not sure I'm going to vote for this until I see some numbers. What you're describing is that the park, the party that owned it, which is Heinz, that they bought the property. They're going to get 700, we're going to sell bonds and give them or over time, pay them back $700,000 for land they owned, correct?
That's correct.
I don't think that's appropriate, but we may do it. Third
Well, let me
Is this going to increase the, either the assessment or the special assessment for folks in future areas outside of area number one? I think the answer has to be yes.
Correct, but if I can correct one thing, Mr. Robbins, the, the right of way will, is this money's being used to acquire it on behalf of the city. It's, it's not going to be owned by Heinz. This is an acquisition by the city to purchase this right of way.
But we don't have to purchase it. The property will be dedicated to us by plat when the property is subdivided. And we don't have to buy it. And nobody has to be paid for it. So they'll dedicate it when they plat, correct?
Correct. The one, the one distinction here is there's a reimbursement agreement that's been executed back in 2012 where they have a right to receive reimbursement for improvements they, they put within the Pid. And it's up to a certain dollar amount that, that dollar amount is not being increased. This is reducing the dollar amount that remains outstanding to reimburse them. So even though everything you're saying is correct, this is going towards the reimbursement amount that they, that you've already contracted with them to, to pay. So if you determine not to move forward and reimburse them for the acquisition of the right of way, then they will be able to come back and be reimbursed for an additional infrastructure improvement at some point in the future for the same amount, or it could be more because of the contract that you already have in place with them from 2012.
Does the SAP need to be amended?
Yes.
Why don't we have that?
It, well, we won't know what the numbers are until July 16th at pricing. That's when everything will come back to you. Tonight is just the notice so we can move forward to plan and get everything ready in place on July 16th. But we, you will have that before then. Right now, we just don't have
But I would like to see the SAP and the numbers before we approve it. Thanks.
And Tom may want to chime in as well. We will, we have draft numbers available. As Tom mentioned, they're based on current market, current interest rates, which may change in a month. We just don't know. So we can provide you with that. We also have a draft SAP update that's being reviewed right now by the city, city staff and consultants. You'll have that available as well beforehand. So I think we can help provide you some of the information that you're asking for in draft form, understanding this is based on current market information. Prior to July sixteenth, or actually on July sixteenth, we'll have the actual market information, confirm up the numbers at that point. But I think we can provide you with some of the draft information that we're all working from right now in advance, so you can see that and work through some of those ahead of time.
Thanks. Understanding this correctly.
This doesn't cost the city anything. The, the city is not paying any of the fees or any of the expenses for this bond.
Now, the, the expenses of the bonds, to issue the bonds are being paid out of bond proceeds, and then the ongoing administration of the public improvement district is covered by, in addition, a part of the assessment on the properties is not just the principal and interest of the bonds, but there's also a provision for administrative costs on an annual basis. So the.
The city does not pay that.
The city doesn't pay it. The, the, the property owners that are assessed are paying those fees and expenses.
Paying those fees. And the ones that are in the area one, this will not increase their assessments. It may actually lower their assessments?
That's correct. The improvement area number one bonds are going to see a, a reduction in their assessment.
And then, then the other bonds that you're talking about issuing, those will be for individuals down the road, and those assessments may increase, but that'll be something that those people know about as they buy the land.
I, I should point out that I mentioned earlier that what's going on on the other side, we're, we're talking about issuing over fif, about fifteen million dollars worth of bonds, fifteen, sixteen million, something in the vicinity of which seven hundred thousand is to pay for the rights of way. Right now, the debt service every year that's being covered by assessments is about two point eight million dollars a year, and it would be that way through twenty twenty-seven, and then it would be paid off. More tradit, more customary now is for bonds to be issued on a thirty-year basis upfront. Back then, for undeveloped land, it was issued on a much shorter basis. The thirty-year money is basically the way to go nowadays. So what we're doing is we're stretching the debt out thirty years, and so the annual assessments that are being divided up now in the major improvement area, two point eight million, are going to go down to one point two million, a significant drop. So in the early years through twenty twenty-seven, the property owners are going to see assessments drop by more than one point six million a year. But then that one point two keeps going through the, through year thirty.
For a much longer period. All right. I cleared up what I need.
If anyone wants to pay their assessment off early, they can do it, and they, they aren't on the hook for thirty years. They aren't on the hook, they're only on the hook until they pay it off.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, Frank. How are, how are they doing in terms of growth in, in income? Are they, are they pretty much on target, or they're doing better? What?
Yes, Frank, we can get you, you know, I can, I can send you the, the preliminary numbers for both bond issues and a draft of the SAP, the latest draft. And I can send them straight to Josh, and then Josh can forward them to y'all.
With that, also, on, on July sixteenth, you'll have the entire team. It won't just be me and Tom. You'll also have representatives from Heinz, the underwriter, as well as John Snyder, available to answer your questions. So you'll have everyone there to, to be able to get into a lot of this, if you, if you'd like.
So Tom, I have a question. The ones that are refunded, the property owners in area one that have paid off their, their PID, would they, would they see a refund because of the lowering?
No, they, their assessment, their, their base, they paid, paid off the principal balance of their assessment. And so the remaining property owners are continuing to pay off that principal that's prorated to their property on an ongoing basis, plus interest. So they're not, they're still on the hook for the principal amount, no matter what. The, what we're changing is the amount of interest. The interest is going to be, is going to go down, but the principal amount stays the same, and, you know, once the principal's paid off, it's paid off, but they're not accruing any interest. There's no savings to be made, other than the fact that they're not paying interest anymore.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Counsel?
I'd like to just throw it in there. If there's, if you guys give any further information to Frank or anyone along the way, I'd love to be included in that.
Yeah, Mayor, what I'll do, when, when Tom sends me that, I'll just go ahead and forward it out to all the council.
I'll be doing that shortly. And it'll be an abbreviated set of numbers. I don't think anybody needs some of the details that are in here. You get lost. I'll, I'll basically show you the sources and uses of funds and the, the comparison of debt service, old and new. Yes, oh.
And the draft SAP.
And the draft SAP, for sure. You're going to love reading it. And Bart can send you the indentures if you really want to have some fun tonight.
All right, well, if I don't have anybody else from council, this time I'll open it up to members of the audience to see if they have any questions for Bart or Tom. Paul?
Hi, good evening. I'm glad you guys understand this stuff, because it's way over my head. So.
Only because we've done it two or three times in the past. Some of us have.
Clearly. Mr. Robbins proves his worth on this council. It's been at most every city council meeting.
It might understand that the, the city is not going to be paying the interest on these bonds, but instead,
that comes from the property owners?
Well, the, the city is paying the principal and interest, but it's only paying it from the special assessments that are collected. There's no other recourse against the city except for those assessments.
And you're going to issue both, you would be issuing tax and tax exempt bonds, correct?
That, that's correct. The interest to the purchasers of the bonds on the series A side will be, if I got it straight, those will be taxable, and the series B will be tax exempt, I believe. Do I, I may have it backwards.
And how many actual bonds would there be? Is there two, there's just, it sounds like two bonds. Is that correct?
There, there's three bond issues. There's one by itself. That's the improvement area number one refunding bonds. Those are tax exempt. And then the MIA bonds, there's two series. Series A, that's the taxable one. And then series B is the tax exempt.
With, and the, the revenue to service those bonds to re, to, just to reconfirm, is going to come from those property owners, correct?
That's correct. It cannot come from any other source. And there's.
And this is projected thirty years out, is, is your payment, the, the amortization schedule, thirty years?
That's correct.
And is that amers, amortization schedule, is it predicated on growth from behind, from that property? Is it predicated upon a projected growth?
No, it's based on the fact that they exist at the time the bonds are issued.
So if there's no, there's no future sales, that should not inhibit the city's ability to service the debt. Correct?
That, that's correct. I, I should point out, when we did the initial bonds back in twenty twelve, when these things first get issued, we're basically issuing bonds on vacant land. And so we have, we get an appraisal that, at, at the time we did the twenty twelve bonds, we had an appraisal that said, once these utility improvements, street improvements, et cetera, are made, they, they valued the property with the amount of the bonds we were issuing to, to build the infrastructure, the value was triple the amount of bonds that we issued, three times. We have three times the value. So the value for the homes was not even in the. That value, of course, is subject to property taxation by the city of La Vila Vista.
I think you, you can detect from several council members, there's that inherent trepidation in all of us to want to take on debt. Can we pay for the debt? What's going to happen to the debt? My, my, my only concern, and it sounds like you've addressed it, is in light of the recession that we're now in, city and state tax revenue is down on average across the US twenty percent right now. In some places like New York, it's down forty percent. So if tax revenues remain depressed for a long time, and if indeed the Congressional Budget Office is correct, and that it's going to take ten years to get back to a four percent GDP growth, we can still service this, this bond issuance, the debt repayments.
Well, it, of course, depends on the property owners paying their assessments.
But short of that, you don't need new property owners to service the debt. Assuming everybody's paying.
At the time that the assessment is made, it's the property owner's responsibility. It doesn't depend on growth or anything. It's basically the assessments are what they are at the time they're made, kind of like the property tax. It's like the property owner as of January first. I believe the assessment's done the same way.
Well, thank you very much for. I appreciate it.
Frank? The city's not servicing the debt, correct?
Technically, it is the revenue stream of the city, but it's, the only source of revenues to service the debt are the assessments that are paid annually from the property owners within the PID. So the city's name is on the debt, but it doesn't tap the general fund. It doesn't tap any other revenue source. It is strictly limited to the assessment revenues that are collected each year.
What hap, what happens if the bondholders aren't getting their money?
It means the property owners aren't paying their assessments, and you could foreclose on the property.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else out there? Questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Dick.
Just a clarification. The main reason that you're doing this right now is because of the low interest rates and the opportunity to reduce basically what's going to end up being the overall expense of the bonds.
It's essentially to, on the IA one bonds, it's, it's a twofold purpose, really. On the IA one bonds, that's correct, we're lowering the cost to the property owners in IA one. And we're also getting rid of the old indenture and replacing it with a more modern indenture. On the MIA bonds, we're not saving money over thirty years. We're saving significant money in the first seven years, significant money, but we're paying for it by stretching the debt service out. So we're not doing it to save money overall. We're doing it to save significant money over seven years, lower the assessments to a more reasonable level that will continue on for thirty years. And we're getting rid of the old indenture and replacing it with new.
Yes, Frank.
I'm sorry, guys. I thought I heard you say that one of the reasons we're doing this is to pay Heinz earlier for, for instance, the seven hundred thousand dollars.
That's the third. I should have mentioned for the MIA bonds, there's three purposes.
Oh, right. It's to refinance, so Heinz gets the reimbursement money earlier, correct?
That, that's correct. And basically, the bonds, Frank, even from the start, if, if you can either pay the seven hundred thousand over time through the reimbursement agreement, or they can get the money now, and then you pay the bonds off over time. It's, it's basically one or the other. The assessments are going to be there to either pay the reimbursement agreement or to pay bonds. It was considered a good time to do, do it now and wrap it all into one package, instead of having the reimbursement agreement paid off over time. Essentially, when you do a reimbursement agreement, it's, it's Heinz basically has bought a bond, and you have to pay the bond off to them. They would own seven hundred thousand dollar bond, essentially, in the form of a reimbursement agreement. We're just rolling that big bond reimbursement agreement into the MIA refunding.
All right, real quick, do you have another question there, Paul?
Just a clarifying question. You said it's a good time to sell debt right now. And what, what kind of an interest rate do you expect you'll have to pay in order to sell the debt?
Right now, on the, let's see. I'm going to go back to the two thousand twelve bonds and, and tell you what those rates are. They're higher than what you normally hear, because these are non-rated bonds. They don't have a credit rating. In twenty twelve, we issued bonds with coupons ranging from six and a half to six point eight seven five, or six point nine percent, six and a half to six point nine.
I'll buy that bond at that interest rate.
Yeah, and that was over, it's over a year.
That's amazing. I mean.
The, the.
Why do you think that that interest rate, you could, you could get that interest rate in current market conditions when municipal bonds in February, March dropped forty percent at, on coupon value?
That's why we're refinancing.
So the refinancing, that's why. Okay. Thank you for answering my question.
The, the coupons on the IA one bonds are going to be in the three and a half to four and a half range out to twenty forty-two. And the taxable bonds on the MIA, we're looking at. Just rolling that big bond reimbursement agreement into the MIA refunding.
All right, real quick, do you have another question there, Paul?
Just a clarifying question. You said it's a good time to sell debt right now. And what what kind of an interest rate do you expect you'll have to pay in order to sell the debt?
Right now, on the, let's see, I'm going to go back to the 2012 bonds and and tell you what those rates are. They're higher than what you normally hear because these are non-rated bonds. They don't have a credit rating. In 2012, we issued bonds with coupons ranging from six and a half to 6.875, or 6.9%. Six and a half to 6.9.
I'll buy that bond at that interest rate.
Yeah, and that was over, it's over a.
That's amazing. I mean.
The, the.
Why do you think that that interest rate, you could, you could get that interest rate in current market conditions when municipal bonds in February, March dropped 40% at, on coupon value?
That's why we're refinancing.
So the refinancing, that's why, okay. Thank you for answering my question.
The the coupons on the IA1 bonds are going to be in the three and a half to four and a half range out to 2042. And the taxable bonds on the MIA, we're looking at 4.2 through five and three quarters, that's taxable. That's about 30 years as opposed to the original bonds, which were only out 15. And then the tax exempt bonds, which are on the long end, are carrying a 550 coupon. So the coupons are coming down, but it's being, it's going out over a longer period of time.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor?
If we're.
Are we going to take action on this particular section right now?
Yes, we have to, because they're wanting to bring this back, all the information, everything on July 16th. If we do not allow them to proceed, they'll bring it back at that time.
I'm going to recuse myself. I think I benefit this in some way.
Very well. So if there's, if there's not anything else, then we can take action. And it's two separate items. Remember, I read number three and number four in the session. So it would require two separate motions, one for resolution 20-1846 and one for resolution 1840. All right. Well, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we approve resolution number 20-46.
Second.
All right, I have the motion and the second from Dave Williams. Place one. Was there any further discussion?
Aye.
Place one's aye. Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Place six? I'm sorry, I said place four. That was Tim. He was recused. Place six?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay, the motion carries 6-0 with one. Number 10 Collins. All right. Now we're on to resolution number 20-18. All right. Well, I'll go ahead and make that we approve resolution 20-18.
I'll second.
All right, I got the motion. Second was Dick Weatherly. Any further discussion? All right, place one? Place one? That, that's David, right? Place one? That's David, right? Place one?
Did David answer? David answer?
Sorry, I just came back on. Aye.
Aye, all right.
I keep losing audio.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Okay, four is recused. Place five?
Aye.
Place six?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion.
Quick, quick shot. When you guys sent in all this, can I get a copy of it? I don't, I don't know, I don't need the whole thing, but I'd like to read the reimbursement agreement. Can I get that?
Yes, yeah, we, and that, it should be on file with the city, but I'll make sure we get you a copy.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Bart.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We'll see you in two weeks, or, I mean, two sessions.
And I'll get that, those documents to Josh right away.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, we will move to item number five. Discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding ordinance number 20-06-18-01 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lago Vista, Texas pursuant to Vernon's Texas Codes annotated Local Government Code, Chapter 102, Section 102 dot 007B, providing for amendments to ordinance number 19-09-19-02 for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020. Amendments to said budget by department are set forth in Exhibit A attached to this ordinance. All right, number five. This is capital improvement programs. We started the year with $1 million in our CIP for street rehab. Those, the projects that were approved have been completed. However, there are additional streets within our street rehab program that are scheduled for this year that will require additional funding. Those streets can be completed during the current fiscal year if the council approves an additional appropriation of $550,000. And then if you can look at your package, and you can see the streets that are listed for rehab. You know, we have this street rehab program that we've put in. It's a seven year program. And we have got to make sure if we're going to get this done, you know, on time, on schedule, and within, that we have got to make sure we address them as they they come forward. And right now, we're looking at being able to finish out the FY20 projects. It's going to require an additional $550,000. The funding for this comes out of our general fund reserves or any associated accounts. So we have questions. I'll let Josh answer, you know, the status on our general fund reserves and the balance. And and then if there are any associated accounts, I'll let Josh address that.
Mayor, one thing I want to add is, if approved, the process for this, then the city would go out to bid, just like on the last round of projects for Thunderbird and Boggy. We'll go out to bid on those projects and then bring them in. We wanted to have action by council before we went out and started to request bids for the overlay projects, which are American Highland Lake, the two sections of Highland Lake. The Fog Seal projects are lower cost, they're less expensive projects. And so those are things that wouldn't require the majority of this money, but the American and the two Highland areas are more expensive.
All right. So questions, comments from staff? Counsel, I mean.
Mr. Mayor? The only thing I'd like to add to this is that we are doing a good job of getting some of our streets fixed. Eric worked very hard on getting this plan put together and designated a number of streets that need to be done each year in order to get the program completed. This is a very worthwhile place to spend this money. And it is something that we need to do so that we do not start off next year already behind. We need to make sure that we stay up to date on this. And 550 to maintain where we need to be with the streets, I think is a very reasonable price. We have the money. I think it's something we need to do.
I agree. Yes, Don?
I agree. I just got a couple of questions. First of all, so we budgeted $1 million last budget cycle to do this. And so now we're basically 50% over budget? Or did you accomplish more in a shorter period of time than you expected to? Yeah, Mayor, so good question. So two, two points, actually. The dollars budgeted would have only covered the projects that we laid out. The bids were a little higher, but the area, if you recall, we covered some of the area in the bids, the cost overrun out of the operating budget, which would have been the $1.3 million operating budget in the street department. We didn't include these items in its entirety based on not knowing what the prices were going to be. So what we did, part of what Council Barlow referencing there, remember, we had to do some prep work on all the streets before we could come back and do the overlays. So we have been aggressive. We have accomplished the prep work on Boggy, Thunderbird, and a couple other streets, and on the American and Highland. So we have been aggressive. They have, the street crew has been effective. And so now it's presented the opportunity for us to go ahead and bid it in the same fashion that we bid out this first round of projects. So both of those things. So I feel like the last time we we discussed it at council, we were discussing the overlay of Boggy Ford. And we had received bids that were too high, as the city engineer told us. And so we're going to do those in-house. And it seems we, they actually went to bid. And we haven't, we haven't talked about any of that since that meeting. You're talking about Boggy? Yes. So Mayor, actually, that, so that's a little different than what we were doing. If you recall, we received bids on Boggy to do the subsurface work and the drainage work and the overlay. And so what Eric told us then was, since we couldn't cover that, it would have expended all of our budgeted dollars for the year, plus some. City staff, James's crew did the drainage work, and they completed the patchwork. So that's the subsurface issues. That we did in-house. Then we bid out the overlay, and it fit within the budget based on our ability to use street crews to do that work. So that's how that, that's how Boggy and Thunderbird both played out. You are correct. We did receive bids for total package, and those were way outside of any type of feasible number. So so now the work that we just did on Barquet was that, where was, what was the deal on that? I don't, was that another contractor? Or was that the city crews? Work on Barquet on the overlay? Got overlay, yeah. Overlay was contractor. Yes, that was included, included in that last package. Yes, sir. Okay.
Anybody else?
And Mayor, the, to go back to Council Barlow, spot on on the point of even on Barquet, crews did the same type of work on Barquet that we did on Boggy, and that's working on the drainage on the side of the roads and the patching, so that I think a lot of us saw the overlay crews were able to come in and complete these longer streets in a couple of days. So that's the work you're seeing. And I think we had a lot of comments on, on Thunderbird and Boggy and Barquet, that the overlay contractors were able to get in and out relatively quickly and cause less interruption of normal traffic flow. And did those get the two inch overlay that we were, the city does? They got the full two inches? Barquet or Boggy? I don't know the depth. Let me see if I can pull it up here.
We had to rework one of those streets, right? Because the citizens ignored the cones.
We ended up having to fix a couple areas. Yes, sir. And so Barquet was a, was a microsurface. So that's a different thickness than what Boggy and Thunderbird are?
They were an inch and a half, weren't they, Josh?
That's what I was trying to pull up, what the, basically, the thickness or the depth are. Let me see if I can pull that one.
Thick in my mind was an inch and a half overlay.
Thunderbird is an inch and a half, two inch on Boggy. And then microsurface seems not as thick as.
It's half inch.
Yeah, it's going to be a smaller, it's definitely less than the inch, so. Barquet seemed pretty thick to me. Looked rather tall. While you're looking at that, Josh, I had one other question. I'd had a couple people complain about a portion of Boggy as you get close to the light, that was kind of washboarded from probably rain during the work or something. Did that get fixed? I don't drive that way, so. Yeah, Mayor, so the closer area going up towards where the new Boggy and Lowman intersection, that area was repaired. We brought in a contractor, city crews worked together, had to level that turn, basically, right around that bend. And so it has been repaired and widened so that it, it's sufficient space for traffic. Yes, sir.
Arch, did you have something?
Yes, sir. I have a couple of questions for Josh. The first one is, how much is in the general fund reserve account presently?
Give me one second. Mayor was saying that, and then I stopped pulling it up. It is, I'll look at the financial statement. The one thing we have to look at on the financial is, we'll look at the April financial. And we've got to remember the allocations that we've taken out for other projects. But one second, I can answer that question, Mayor. General Fund Reserve for the April financial statement that hasn't been allocated for other projects shows 3.2 million.
Okay, that's, that's a significant amount. So the reason why I ask that is, we have three months left in this fiscal year. Do we anticipate taking on any other projects that we should consider now with respect to resurfacing these roads?
Yes, so street projects, Mayor, no, we, we're not looking at any additional projects. If we fund these projects, this will wrap up street projects for FY20.
Okay, that's all I have.
And and the list, Mayor, the, the tricky part is, the list of projects, as we've talked before, on streets, we have to control that, and we have to plan it out accordingly because going in and blocking off streets and causing delays in traffic is a mess. And the one thing we don't want to do is cause property owners to have, not have access for a reasonable amount of time at their property. We saw this during the striping. The striping's a little tricky, but when the asphalt comes in, there's a cure period. We recommend four hours for the thick, for the thickest asphalt to cure. So you want no traffic on those streets during that time. When we come in and we do striping, which for most roads is the yellow stripe in the middle, and then the white stripes on the side, our recommendation this time was, once you can see the striping vehicle get out of your line of sight, then you can access those streets and drive over top of the lines. However, it would be nicer to have an hour to allow stripes to cure. The one thing people don't want to see is damaging the stripes, damaging the asphalt. We want to see these repairs and improvements last over time. So our challenge is to, to schedule out as to not negatively impact one area, neighborhood, community for an unacceptable amount of time. So the $550,000 that we're trying to allocate for the next three months, what is that going to achieve? So Mayor, that'll hit, that'll hit American and two sections of Highland Lake. The first section, Highland from MacArthur to American, and then Highland, Santa Monica to Emerald. It'll come back through, excuse me, and it'll stripe those, will stripe those streets as well. And then you'll have Fog Seal, which is another protective coat in through to prolong the life of the streets, which is all part of our street rehab program on Calpoke Ford, Jefferson, Lago Vista Way, Monroe, Navajo, Passado Vaca, the Pole, and Sierra. And then there's, there's drainage work tied into those as well, because there's, one of the, one of the things we've talked about over and over again is not only correcting bad spots in the existing roadways, but ensuring that the drainage is repaired, because we understand water is a huge impediment to the overall lifetime of asphalt. So if the water, if the drainage. So if the water, if the drainage system is not effective, then, and we can't control the water around the streets, then it's going to compromise the integrity of the asphalt.
And for anybody that does drive down Boggy Ford Road, you know, we had crews go in and do the drainage. Then they came in and did the street overlay. And you will now see crews go back in from the city and tie in the asphalt into that drainage. And so the drop-offs that you see from the asphalt into the drainage will disappear as they, as they grade that back out and fill it back in. So it'll be a smooth transition into the drainage.
Yeah, it's a great point, Mayor. For people that are seeing Boggy, for example, and then on Thunderbird next, they're, you know, we think that the projects are finished because the stripes are down, but there's still crews out there doing that maintenance work that you pointed out.
Did I also hear that we hired some additional people recently, the street crew or other crews?
Mayor, we haven't hired any additional to the, to the street crew. And we've not done anything outside of an operating budget. Theoretically, there could have been a position open, they could have filled it, but there's, there's no new staff. In the request for next year, there are requests for new staff, but none in the street crew. If you talk long enough, Eric may chime in and ask for more people, but just look away.
All right, anybody else? Counsel?
Nope.
All right, well, at this time, I'll open it up to members of our audience. There he is. I knew he was coming in there.
Hold on just a second. Hey, fix those roads. Thank you. That is all.
All right. Anybody else? All right, well, if that's everything, then this is an action item and it is open for action.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I make a recommendation that we approve ordinance 20-06-18-01 for the additional appropriation of the $550,000.
I second.
I will second.
Right, I have the motion by Dave Williams and the second was Dick Weatherly. He beat Tim to the button. Is there any, any additional comments? All right, place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion carries unanimous. Fix those roads. That is all. All right. Item number six. Discussion, consideration, and possible action on selecting an engineering consulting firm for the roadway water and wastewater impact fee and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute the contract. Now, let me bring up my notes for number six. Right, May 18th of this year, the city issued a RFQ to select an engineering firm for preparing a new roadway impact fee and update the existing wastewater, wastewater impact fee. Services will include engineering analysis for the preparation of a new impact fee, guide the city through the land use assumptions, proper notices, advertising, and make recommendation to council. The city received two statements of qualifications. The staff determined that Freez and Nichols was most qualified for this proposed project. We have worked with Freez and Nichols in the past, as many of you know, and is one of the four consulting firms that the city selected in the past used for engineering services on a rotation basis. The last utility impact fee update was completed in 2016. The state requires the impact fees to be updated every five years. Typically, the process takes about six months. And we have, and to note, we have not had a roadway impact fee before. So this will be something that is new. Counsel currently has 45,000 budgeted for update of the utility. However, because we are asking to add this roadway impact fee, the budget will be approximately 55,000. The new roadway impact fee will require all new builds to pay a share of impact fee for roadway expansions and extensions. Staff has identified Lowman Ford widening, Boggy expansion and realignment, Ananza and municipal extension, and other smaller street widens and extensions. Engineering consultant will guide staff and council on what projects qualify and how to best recoup our project costs. Counsel has the option to only proceed with utility impact if so wish, and we can exclude the roadway impact fee. However, the request is to consider both. Funding, 45% comes from the utility fund, 55% from the general fund. The utility fund was from this fiscal year and the 55% from general fund will be from, will come out of next year's budget. And we will start with Frank.
Mayor, some of this may be because you're reading the staff report. So I've got some issues with what the staff has recommended or stated. And I've had a, I sent an email on the 11th and then visited with the city manager and the city attorney on some of these. The first one has to do with the issue of the thoroughfare plan. And Josh, you and I visited. When we do the road impact fees, they're going to do basically a thoroughfare plan out 10 years. And I was hoping we could get a thoroughfare plan out to 20 years. And then that would update or change what our thoroughfare plan is that's now in the 2016 comp plan. So Josh, is this going to cost anymore to have a 20-year plan?
Mayor, we had the dialogue with both Freez and Nichols and with the other contractor, contract firm, which was HDR. That's the two firms that submitted. Both have responded back to us. And as Council Robbins said, they will project it out for the 10 years. One of the things that we're going to have to do is in negotiating the contract with the selected contractor, the selected firm, we'll then have to ask them if that's something they would include to take it out an additional 10 years or if there are additional dollars required for that. If it doesn't fit within the scope, then we would need to bid out that section. We need to go out and do an RFQ just for the thoroughfare plan separately. But as Council Robbins already stated, that is a document they would use in developing the impact fees.
Well, you have to develop the 10-year plan. And so going to 20 is really easy because you already got the model and you just add, add how many more trips you think they're going to have in 10 years. So I assume that's going to have to be part of our motion. Or would it be a separate motion to add a 20-year thoroughfare plan?
Well, when we get to the contract, if we approve the city manager to enter into the negotiation process, if he spoke with them on the 20-year and they won't include it, but yet they said they can do it for an additional 5,000, then it would be something that would come back to us. Would that correct?
That's correct, Mayor. And as you noted earlier, Mayor, the one thing that we'll still have to do is we'll still have to come back with the budget amendment on the additional amount once we have that amount solidified. So as you already stated, we have to bring that back. So like you said, Mayor, if we've got to bring it back, we'll bring it back at that same time so that council knows what the dollars are and then you can consider that.
I got it. I think, I think it's, I think we could do it with one motion, but we might do it with two. Number two, this has to do with the, on page 33, indicate the funding sources says 45% utility fund, 1920. I think that's $45,000, isn't it?
Mayor, that's correct. From our estimate right now, it would be from the top 45,000 from the general and, from the utility and $55,000 from the general.
Okay, then it says 55%. I think that's supposed to be 55,000 from the general fund FY 2021. Now, Josh, I haven't talked, we didn't talk about this when you guys apologized, so I'm going to ambush it. We, you can't hire, and correct me, you cannot hire a consultant unless the council has allocated money. And we can't allocate money out of next year's budget, correct?
Mayor, that's correct.
So what, when you come back to us, you're going to want to pay whatever the consultant says it costs or whatever that number is out of the reserve fund.
Also correct.
So it's going to be this FY that we'll pay the consultants. Okay, super.
Yeah, because Mayor, the consultant will require that we pay it in the current year, even if we pay it that we allocate funds to pay their contract. They're not going to give us an IOU for the final payment and say, oh, we know you're good for your word. They'll want to require that. So we will bring the budget amendment to the council based on FY '20. And then back to the, even though the percentages and the numbers are tricky, they both add up to 100, so 45,000 is still going to be 45% how we look at it. But we will, the budget amendment will show FY '20 and reserves.
Okay, final, final point. The second to last paragraph on page 32 says, "New roadway impact fees will require all new bills to pay." And that was the legal question we looked into. Can we do that?
I think there just needs to be clarification on that statement. It's not all new builds, meaning it wouldn't apply to things in, say, Old Lago where things haven't been replatted. It applies to all new platted lots. Or if, for example, in Old Lago, somebody bought a bunch of lots and they replatted them and it caused additional impact, then it could apply at that point. It's only when you're adding additional impact to your system or to your infrastructure that you can charge those fees. So typically, new developments is what we, is what we would expect.
Yeah, new subdivisions. Thank you.
That makes it almost seem kind of pointless to me. I don't see us getting a whole lot of new platted subdivisions.
You know, the density changes are one of the things that we're seeing and that's something that the council's been presented with on a couple of times. So if you get density changes and new builds outside of Old Lago, which has not been platted yet, then that's where you're going to see, you'll see a big increase.
We're also seeing the potential for some areas that have previously been platted to be replatted. And as Josh said, more density.
Okay.
Go ahead, sorry.
I'm wondering if we're still kind of in the negotiation about what we're going to get. Are we narrowing it down to Freez and Nichols a little early? In my experience, if you're still negotiating, it's probably still a good process to keep your options open.
Mayor, so we're actually, we're not negotiating at all with them now. You recall, the process we were doing before is we would bring, we would negotiate and bring that contract back to council. What we're doing now is council will select the contractor, then we'll do the negotiation and put together a contract.
So we don't. And then we'll approve it.
Yeah, we're not engaging in that, in that negotiation now.
Or not, we're not approve it and then we go back out. So, so the total cost, excuse me, so the total cost is 100,000?
Yes, sir, that's what we're projecting.
Okay. I thought, I misunderstood it when I read it. I thought it went from 45 to 55 and we were only adding 10,000 to the amount to be budgeted.
No, Mayor, the difference is you got to, since we already have an established water and wastewater impact fee, it's an update to that. And then developing a new impact fee, which would be a street impact fee, starting from scratch. And so if you're not updating something, they're going to have to generate the information, just like Council Robbins talking about the thoroughfare plan and the modeling.
So what was the bid coming from HDR?
So it's just qualifications. So we review the two sets of qualifications and not a dollar figure. The number that we use as the estimates are just market estimates that we're using from previous work. You look at Freez and Nichols attachment, that's their qualifications that they've sent in. They don't show an estimate for doing that work.
So if we vote on this tonight, we're authorizing you to negotiate those numbers with them.
Yes, up to that amount. So typically, as Council Robbins would point out, with a not to exceed amount. And then if it exceeds, then it comes back to council at that point. Yes, sir.
So it doesn't come back to council if you get a number under 100 right now?
Correct.
This is our first viewing of this first meeting in the month situation.
Correct.
I'd kind of like to see a little more info when we're spending that much money. Would like to suggest we push that off to the next council meeting?
What, what information would you like to see?
Well, I just kind of want to know exactly what we're getting and what areas of town would be subject to that impact fee. A lot of what I see is the infill building, they're doing the damage to the streets, right? They're doing the cut acrosses. And what I certainly don't want to see is any of the recently repaired streets getting high ends cut straight across them.
Right, and that is the fee schedule that we just changed last, I don't know, couple of council meetings ago where we added the 50 cents per square foot to the road, the road maintenance fee. So that's where your new builds along Old Lago and along these new streets, that's where they cover the damages that they're costing, they're causing.
I just feel like it would take a long time to pay back the $100,000 study if we're waiting on newly platted builds to generate that income. Maybe we cross that bridge when we get to it.
Go ahead, Frank.
Yes, Frank.
The impact fee can only pay for the expansion of capacity in our roads. And so that's widening roads. You can count turn lanes, traffic signals thanks to that ilk, not maintenance or improvements of the existing road unless somehow you've managed to increase the capacity of that road, carry more traffic faster. And Don, I think you're right. It's going to be a long time before we get paid back. Plus, the way the impact fee laws in the state of Texas, we're not going to get paid back from new development. The total cost to them for that new traffic, that's just a function of the way that the state law works. And it could be either 50% or some other higher number. But Don, you're right, we're not going to get a ton of money in a hurry.
Mayor, we look at it, just on that, in terms of the math, we look at if you've got a development that's not platted and it's new or the density's higher, and let's say they add 100 lots and the total impact. and let's say they add a hundred lots, and the total impact fee for that lot, for each lot, is five thousand dollars. Well, there you go. There's five hundred thousand. So the, so, so looking at the numbers, the fifty-five thousand for street impact, if we don't get it developed now, then we're not gonna get ahead. We may not have any type of development in the next ten years. I don't believe that to happen. I think if we use our last three years as an example, uh, that we see that. But just like on the water and wastewater side, if we're, if the impact fees for water and wastewater are roughly thirty-five hundred dollars per lot, and we're getting three hundred a year that are new, then we're definitely seeing a, a revenue stream that will exceed the forty-five thousand dollars spent on it, on redoing that.
And this, this, uh, this work that the firm was doing, that would, that would tell us what we should set our impact fees at?
Yes, sir. That's what they do, Mayor. They're looking at the, uh, they're looking at the development, and they're looking at the cost, and they're putting that together to give the recommendation for the impact fees. And that's the same way they look at water and wastewater.
Yes, Frank, charging us for.
They're, they're gonna come up with numbers about, and there, there's two ways they're gonna, there's two systems they're gonna use to tell us what the number is. But the council will decide what the fee is. And it could, it, you, you wouldn't be able to go for a higher number than what the study shows, but you could adopt an impact fee for a lower number.
Mayor, that's correct. I think that's what, I think that's what Council Baltho just said. They'll set a max fee, and then council decides what to do after that.
I'd like to put it in place now, just cuz I think that, uh, if we ever develop anything on the east side, uh, I'd like to have that in place before we start. And who knows if they're gonna change any of the plotting out here? Because they had a fifty-five and older thing that they were gonna put in, but that may not work. So they could replot a whole bunch of, uh, territory out lakeside. And the trucks, the heavy trucks take an hour, take a mile to get in, even before you hit the first houses, so there's a big impact out here.
Don?
I, I just think this is something that we could address in the budget uh, for next year, and I don't think it's gonna do a lot of anything this year. And it's a hundred grand during a pandemic. It just seems irresponsible to me to pay for a consultant right now. Arch?
Yes, um, I just wanted to make the, um, observation that we're talking here about simply selecting this engineering consultant, are we not? Whatever those, whatever those numbers are, that's a totally different topic, totally different discussion.
You're authorizing the city manager to have that discussion without coming back to us up to a hundred thousand dollars?
Mayor, so just a clarification too. It still requires a budget amendment before it can be final executed. Cuz right now, we're at forty-five, we're at forty-five thousand's what budgeted. So you, you have to have that action by council to create the pathway by which we could pay it. So that would, you, you're correct. If you take that action, we have to bring that back to you before we can sign off on that contract of negotiation. Theoretically, we would have it completed and ready to present back to council at the next council meeting, the, the budget amendment. So we can't sign it until we have that.
Is there, is there a, a period of validity on the RFQ?
Um, Mayor, I'm not sure. Let me just check and see if the language is there.
So if we, uh, if we held off on that, the forty-five that we already have budget, rolled that into next year's budget, and we wait until we do our FY twenty-one budget and look at all this at one time, yeah, that's my question. Can we still, can we still negotiate with Freezing Nichols, or would we have to put it back out for?
Yeah, so if you're looking that far out, Mayor, you've got, it looks like sixty days, so you would have to go back out to RFQ. Cuz you don't select engineering firms on bids. You, you have to select them on the qualifications and then negotiate after, so it would be going back out, Mayor. There are projects now, Mayor, that have the possibility to, to be replats. Um, so you can look at, um, potentially, there's property in the hollows that could be a replat. There's property on, uh, on Loman that could be a replat. I mean, if those are, if, if those are additional, if they had a hundred houses and they go up to three hundred houses, you know, in theory, there are additional, uh, revenue streams that could be impacted.
So when would this go into effect? I mean, we're talking six months for the study.
It doesn't go into, it doesn't go into effect until it's been presented to council, reviewed, and you guys take action. That's why if you're able to get something moving now, then you're closer to getting something back to the council by budget timer end of year.
So when you say there's projects that could potentially be replatted, would that be, where are we looking within that six-month period? And would, would miss them anyway?
Yeah, I, I would, um, you and I had a meeting in, in November of twenty seventeen with a developer, and, uh, we were working with that developer yesterday, and nothing's happened on, on that site. So I can't tell you, I can't tell you when someone's gonna develop something. They, all of these projects could happen next week, and they could happen a hundred years from now.
I've got another impact fee question. When we voted to refund the impact fees to the fire department, have we given them that money back yet?
Yes, we have.
So what's that do to our budget? That, my, that was coming from a separate source, right? It was an impact fee account that's nothing to do with the.
So Mayor, what happened?
To pay that back to the city.
So what we, what we end up doing is we basically refunded what they paid out of the impact fees, and then the council took the action to reimburse the impact fees using general fund revenues. So like Mayor Protim said.
We moved general fund fees back into impact.
Yes, sir, cuz we had to, we had to make impact fee fund whole for that action. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't see why we, we would delay doing the study, especially since the dollars have to come back to us before it's ever approved and moved forward. It just gives the city an opportunity to get ahead of the game. And get, get a study that's working. But before the contract is ever done, those dollars are gonna have to come to us at a later council meeting before anything is done. So I, I don't see why we're delaying anything.
We could possibly be doing. But what if one of these businesses goes under during these economic hardships we're all experiencing? And we've just spent that energy for nothing. I, it's one of those other situations where I just, I, I know you feel like you wanna get something done and move forward, but I don't think this is a problem we need to be addressing in this format in this month or next month. And it's, it's a hundred thousand dollars. That's, that's a lot of money.
Again, we're not paying that until it comes back to council.
Josh will be, Josh will be signing a contract?
No, he can't contract until we approve the dollar figure.
Josh might tell you differently.
Josh will not sign the contract until it's negotiated and we approve it.
If it's under a hundred thousand dollars, we don't have to approve it.
No, until you approve the budget amendment. So the contract will hold, cuz we can't execute it until we have the dollars allocated to satisfy the terms of the contract. So that's, that's the difference. Just wanna make sure we're clear. If approved, and given the authority to execute the contract, I can execute the contract, but not until council executes the, um, the budget amendment that gives me sufficient money to satisfy the contract. No engineering firm, uh, worth their weight in salt would say, sure, you go ahead and we'll sign off on it if you don't have a, a funding mechanism. So that's the item that would come back to council.
Or if the, or if the contract that they wanna negotiate goes over your not to exceed number. Those are the two ways it would come back to you.
Don't see the, don't see the reason to rush.
So if we negotiated the contract, could we put off executing the contract till the next fiscal year? Or is that sixty days still come into play?
Correct, Mayor. You're, the, the firm is not gonna, let me rephrase that. You could always ask the firm if we execute and say, could we handle it in such a way? And they could accept or not accept those conditions. So I don't wanna speak for any firm. Uh, contractionally, I don't know, Aaron, what the, what regulation would be outside of that.
If they wanna, go ahead, go ahead, council member.
I don't think you can hire somebody and not have a funding source. I think that's the law.
That's right.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. But if we, if we set the funding source and we execute the contract, and then we ask them not to do the work until the next fiscal year, even though we've got it budgeted, like I said, you could always ask somebody that. I won't even hypothesize what they would say. I'd like them to say, hey, you're good for it. We're in.
Let me, let me, uh, Mayor? Mayor?
Yes, Frank.
Uh, this, you know, Don and the council have been visiting about when we should do stuff. And, and I think I'd count four on this one, but I'm gonna jump in anyway. We've got the money, and this year's money or next year's money, doesn't matter. We've got it. I don't hear anybody saying we shouldn't get money from developers to pay for what they're causing us to do with respect to the price for expanding the road system, which they're having an impact on. I don't hear anybody saying that's a bad idea. You get money from developers to pay for their impact on our infrastructure. So if we have the money now, and you wait, what you've done is given up getting that money. And I don't know why we would do that. The council's essentially, conceptually approved this uh, back in February, so we're not going very fast. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm just curious, you know, if we proceed with this, at least the way it's written, uh, we haven't approved next year's budget, or are we already committing fifty-five thousand from next year's budget to this that? Yeah.
Mayor, what I was, what I clarified for Council Robbins earlier is the action that will come back to the, to the council will be a budget amendment for the FY twenty budget, not for twenty-one. So it'd be the fifty-five from general fund, uh, in FY twenty.
Right, but are we looking at replacing that that money in the general fund from anything else, or is it, is it just a, is it a done deal at that time? I, maybe it's just cuz I'm re, I'm reading where it says, you know, FY twenty-one. I mean, are we looking?
The original way that we would have paid this, and typically is, uh, we'd pay half the payment upfront, and then completion of the project, we pay, upon completion, we pay the final term, uh, pay the contract in full. So in theory, if it rolls into FY twenty-one, then that's where the actual payment will come out of, is FY twenty-one. So that's just guessing. If they get aggressive, they finish it before September thirtieth, then we pay it all in FY twenty. But what I clarified to say is we need to have the funding mechanism in place on the current operating budget, because we can't allocate funds and expenses for the future year without that budget being adopted. So I think our, we got a little too fancy in what we were explaining in the, without more detail in the staff summary. Um, it would all be FY twenty. The allocation would be now. Okay.
Yes, Arch?
Had to turn my mic back on. I don't really see why we're spinning our wheels on this. It's something that we need to do, whether we do it now and pay for it now, or do it later and pay for it later. Makes no, no difference in my mind. It's something that, if we're going to review these impact fees that are already in place and add more to them, then I think we need to, to do something about it now.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Well, at that, at this point, I'll open it up for anybody in the audience? Yes, Paul?
Apologize, Landman. I heard a lot of talk about higher density. And I did a, uh, analysis, uh, several months back. You take, if we promote in Lago Vista, lower density, larger acreage lots, you get a wash on the property value, same tax base, but lesser impact on infrastructure. Just wanna leave that, just wanted to say that much. Thank you.
Yeah, and the impact fee would apply if it's replatted. So whether it got smaller or bigger, we'd get the, we could receive the impact fee. Now, we may not get as much and as many, but. Yes, Dorsey?
Uh, I, I had a question. So how many times this year have we amended the budget for an increase? And then we just amended the budget for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the roads to be finished. And now you want another fifty-five thousand dollars for this other project. So just in tonight, you spent six hundred and five thousand dollars that was not in your budget.
Yeah, times, I don't know. It's probably about a half dozen times over the year.
Okay. And so your original budget of twenty, in twenty twenty, is how much now over? Does anyone know?
No, Mayor, I'd be able to, yeah, I'd be able to point it up and look at it, but, um, one of the things, the same thing we said at the end of the year, if you recall during the, uh, budget process, and I'm not sure if, if Darcy was at that, those meetings or not.
No, I mean, after.
A lot of the discussions made during that were, um, some of the items that we do not know what the price is gonna be. Uh, the conversation was, when we get to that point during the year, we'll bring it back to the council to consider those items. Instead of front-loading with placeholders, uh, we would get into the process and bring those items back. Just like on the street improvement plan, council approved the street plan. We didn't know what the estimates would be. We got the first round of estimates. We used that dollar figure to see what the next round would be, to see if they're effective. Uh, but we can, we can go back through and calculate those numbers and, and have it to the next meeting.
Thank you. Cuz I, I just like to see how much we've actually gone over budget in one year. That's all. Thanks.
Yep. Anybody else? All right. Yes, Dick?
Yeah, uh, the only thing I would say to Paul is, as a council, as a city, we're not promoting. we're not promoting any kind of density, be it larger, be it smaller. That's not in the city's venue. We don't determine what a builder or contractor is going to do. And we don't really have a control over it. All we can do is deal with the ramifications when they come into our city and start tearing things up or start creating situations that have to be dealt with.
May I respond?
Right.
Yes, Frank.
Well, I, Paul, Paul may get my, may want to be. With respect to the area where Paul lives, those are platted lots. If somebody comes in and wants to build a house on that existing platted lot and we have an impact fee in place, they do not pay an impact fee because they're not increasing the traffic beyond what they had already planted. Now, if they divide those lots, that's going to require rezoning. And the council is going to get a crack at that. That's Paul's, I guess, Paul's point. And so, you know, we're looking at the, the stuff that we've seen over the last couple of years, how Paul's neighborhood is a big increase in density. I'd like, if we're going to prove that, we're not doing that tonight. I think those guys ought to pay for the impact they're having on our road system, particularly on.
I agree with that.
What I was speaking to specifically is it, you know, we need revenue in the city and impact fees are an excellent way to generate that revenue. And I think it's certainly reasonable to, um, ask those people who are, um, causing the wear and tear on the city streets to develop their properties and to, uh, profit from that, to share the burden for maintaining our infrastructure. I think that's perfectly reasonable. I would just submit that if we can encourage, um, large lot development consistent with the two thousand sixteen master plan in some of the rural residential areas, um, and create certainty. And my point is just very straightforward. Low, I, if you look in the comments section, I just gave an example of what I was talking about. If you take eighteen three acre lots with home values of two and a half million dollars each, that generates a forty-five million dollar taxable base, infrastructure, city services and school costs for up to eighteen families. You also control non-point source and vegetation and green spaces. You have more of them. The opposite of that is to take three acre lots, for example, and turn them into, subdivide down to two-tenths of an acre lots. Whichever way that happens, you still get that fifty cents per square foot from the builder developer, but you now have to have and maintain infrastructure for up to one hundred eighty homes and families, not just for the roads, but also for our water system, our school system, our utilities, et cetera. It seems like the smarter development would be the lower density, higher income, higher home value. That way you've got less impact on the infrastructure. And I think that's what we're really talking about tonight is how to generate revenue from the expected development. But that development, as I hear it being talked about, is in the context of high-density development. So anyhow, I just wanted to share you guys, share with you guys and, and an alternative to generating revenue, maintaining infrastructure with low density versus high density. So kind of aside from the purpose of your conversation agenda item, but I think it does play in, just given y'all were speaking to that to some extent. Thank you for hearing my opinion on that.
He goes to a Ford.
All right. Anybody else from council? All right.
The mayor, we had, we can make a motion.
Yeah, if we have no more comments, oh, wait, Frank's got his hand up.
Nope, I want to make a motion.
Okay.
That'd be charged. I moved that we select freezing nickels to update the water and wastewater impact fees, develop a road impact fee and possibly to produce a twenty-year thoroughfare plan and authorize the city manager to bring those costs back to us, uh, at which time we may approve a contract.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Uh, Josh, I see your hand up. You have a comment.
Yes, sir. Just a clarification, uh, one thing we were requesting, uh, may be completely out of the motion, but is that also to include, uh, city manager to negotiate and execute a contract or not to do those two actions?
I'm okay with that, but I'm not sure that the council, and, and, and that's why I was wondering if this is two motions. I'm not sure the, I'm, I'm, I'm good with adding that to my motion. Period. Let me just leave it at that.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further comments, questions? All right, we'll start at, uh, place one.
Hi.
Place two.
Nay.
Place three.
Hi.
Place four.
Hi.
Place five.
Hi.
Place six.
Hi.
And I vote nay on this one. Motion carries five to set, five to two. All right, we are, let's see, duh, duh, duh. Number seven. Discussion, consideration and possible action regarding a request to create a water rate study subcommittee. Uh, let me see, get my notes for number seven. Did I print out number seven? All right. Councilor Davae Law made the request at the previous city council meeting that council considered creating a subcommittee to discuss water rates. Um, I'm a, I'm assuming this is for our next budget cycle, um, because we just hired a professional to come in and do a water rate structure, study, a water rate, you know, study based on our, our system for water and wastewater and what our rate should be. And we subsequently changed our fee schedule just a few months ago, uh, based on that wat- water and wastewater rate study. Um, so I'm, I'm assuming this is going to be off of that, off of that study and, and what we want to. Arch, I'll let you, since this is yours, I'll let you address the need for the subcommittee.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, yeah, this is a, a request that we form a three-person subcommittee to study the, the water rate structure that we have in place right now and the, the particular uh, water rates that we're using at, at this current time. And I agree with you, this would be something that would be effective next year, uh, if we decide to make any amendments to what's already in place. Uh, I've already shared some of the, the basic information that I've found in the research that I've done with, uh, counselor, um, Collins and with, uh, Robbins. And so if, if it's agreed upon, I would suggest that we continue the, the water rate study that I have initiated. That's my request.
Okay, so. So my question is, are, are we not happy with the water rate study that we just paid for? Uh, why didn't, why didn't we form a subcommittee back then to, to review all this?
Mayor, this is something that is supposed to actually be done, reviewed annually by a lot of cities. So this would just be falling in line with those cities.
Okay, so why does it require a subcommittee? Can we, is this not something we could do as an entire council as part of our budget process?
Well, certainly what we would bring to council would be something to review. Uh, we would make recommendations based on, uh, the, for the research that we do. This wouldn't be a, a decision that we would make. It would be like any other thing that we've done in the past. We have a, a subcommittee, study a particular issue and then bring it to council and, and vote on, on that at that point.
Okay. Questions, comments from council?
My research kind of indicates that, uh, what you'd be doing is, I mean, we've kind of empowered the city manager to be the, you know, drought monitor. And, uh, I, I think we all here remember the last drought and uh, it, it was a big deal. And I think we know that our population has grown and that drought is probably more likely to happen again than less likely. And, uh, I'm, I feel like this is probably not a good move to go back in time to kind of the way things were before the drought. And I think La Gavista is leading by a good example by not trying to over monetize our water source, which is everyone else's water source also, right? So we're, we're by not, we, I mean, we're usually one head of the required drought stage and we are, you know, we have a slightly punitive, um, escalating water rate for people that use lots of water. And I just, I think it's probably a move backwards after years of work to recover from a drought and put a plan in place. Um, I, I just don't feel like we're going to be moving forward with this action.
Let me, let me make this statement, um, counselor. The, the little work that I've done so far doesn't say that we're a little punitive. It says we are majorly punitive. And so I think that we need to look at, at the, the fact that we have a rate structure that has seven cat- categories of customers. No other study that I've looked at so far recommends any more than five. So there's no reason for us to have a such as what we have right now. That's my, uh, my opinion. And you may not share it, but I've done quite a bit of work and I can back, back up some of the, um, statements that I'm, that I'm making.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a statement?
Yes, with that, Dave?
Yes. Aren't we, aren't we going to be reviewing water rates and whatever our expenditures are during the budget process?
Yes, we should be. Cause we have to figure in, we have to figure in what our, uh, capital improvement projects that we want going forward would be and how that fits into our budget. And I, I, to me, I think we have to, to figure out what are, what are utility departments, you know, expenditures are going to be before we can look at our, our rate structure to see if it's going to cover that or not.
I agree.
I mean, we, we could look at it as, uh, the opposite direction on say, okay, this is our current rate structure um, based on history. This is what we expect our revenues to be. And then try to fit our expenditures into those expected revenues, but, um, you know. Yes. Can't hear you.
Mayor, if I may, if I may, part of the, part of the rate structure, or rather, part of the rates has to do the. I've turned off my camera. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. Here's what, here's the way that the, the rates are typically done. When you have a base rate, that is the part of the rate that takes care of your normal, uh, payback. And then the, the usage part is what is added on according to whatever the customer is using in terms of thousands of gallons in each of these tiers. So that's all, that's all been accounted for as far as how that goes. What we have to do then is to look at what, what do the CIPs represent in terms of that base rate? And then the usage rate would be something that we'd have to look at and see, you know, if what we're doing now is uh, consistent with what other cities around us are doing.
Yeah, that, that kind of throws up one thing because every city's, you, their water system is completely different. So, uh, yeah, I can't compare, you know, Georgetown's water and wastewater system to ours because it's, it's completely different. Um.
Absolutely, absolutely. There's no question. What we can do though is, and the, the two parameters that are used in doing um, an analysis where you're doing a comparison with other cities. The cities have to have basically the same size population and they have this, have to have the same water distribution system. In other words, if you, if you have forced main, you, you look at, uh, cities that have forced main as the delivery system. If they use gravity flow, that's a different, a different situation altogether. So right now I can tell you based on what I've looked at right now is that we can compare our rates to, uh, Marble Falls and to Burnett because they are sized cities much like La Gavissa in terms of population and they use the forced main system to deliver the water.
Right, but how much, how much debt do they have that they're paying for?
Again, the debt is going to be paid for as a part of the, the, the base rate that, that's being charged.
Okay. Well, Mayor.
But yes.
Uh, one other thing, if you're going to be looking at analysis that you need to pay attention to is how much of their sales tax are they using to pay for their water and sewer? Because the cities that function on a large amount of sales tax most of the time supplement their water and sewer operations with sales tax money that we do not have to supplement our system. So, um, a lot of these other cities don't have grinders. They don't have the problems that we have with getting things up and down the hill. Uh, there, there's a lot of things that have to be analyzed. Um, I personally was very happy with the professional whose job it is to do these kind of analysis coming in and telling us what was a reasonable rate. But if you want to get Tim and Frank together and look at it and come back with recommendations, I'm more than happy to listen to them. But I don't know that I would consider them to have the same basis as the professional that we hired to do the review.
I understand. And you'd, you'd be in a perfect position to make that determination if we do the study, complete it and have different figures. If we don't, if we're satisfied that the figures are okay, then that's where we are. But until we actually look at it, you know, look at the nuts and bolts of it, we don't really know. We're just guessing.
So again, I have to ask, did the professional study not look at the nuts and bolts?
Did they, did they present that to us?
I thought so.
They did in detail.
I think if you go back and look at the presentation, you will not see any detail. It was all just generalizations.
Yes, Frank.
Uh, I think some of this played out as a function of several of us visiting. Now would be three of us. And then Arch suggested that we form a subcommittee. I'm not sure that if there are some, if call it a subcommittee or call it three council members, sit down with Josh at one time and try to gather data. It may bring something back. If the three of us are going to come to the same conclusion. So for me, some of this was call it efficient or whatever in saving time because I thought Arch had some really good points. I do think there's data in this study. Arch and I probably spent, and Tim, I know Arch and I probably already spent an hour talking about some of this stuff. So the three of us sit down with Josh and try to gather data. At least three of us will have additional data and whether we come back to the council as a group. And so, and Arch reports that the three of us have come up with X, we'll see. And so, and Arch reports that the three of us have come up with X, we'll see. I don't know that that's going to happen. Josh and I've already gone through some of the numbers and I don't know that I'm a hundred percent with where Arch is. But the point would be for me, hey, that's three of us that are getting together with, with, with Josh. Okay.
Yeah, well.
But yeah, I'm with you.
It's on the agenda for discussion and, you know, if, if we do want a subcommittee, and that's fine, I just want to make sure that if we're going to form a subcommittee, that we open it up in case, you know, David or Don or Dick, other than the three that Arch mentioned, if one of the other three council members would like to be on that subcommittee, that they have that opportunity to volunteer and then we decide, you know, as a council, what three we want on the subcommittee. And again, if we, as, as Frank pointed out, if we choose to not form a subcommittee, you know, council members can meet with Josh, you know, as long as we're not doing anything that violates the Open Meetings Act, you know, you can gather data at any point, so it's out there. Anybody else from council, Tim?
Yeah, you know, we're going to be going into budgeting, setting the tax rate and charging for water. And one of the things that they offer to citizens is if there's a room there to lower the cost of water, they offset whatever we might have to do with taxes, like keeping in what they are instead of going backwards. So I'm looking to see if there is a room to reduce the monthly expenditure of the homeowners.
Okay. Dick?
You know, if they want to make a committee and want to do it, I'm fine with it. I'll listen to whatever they have to say.
Yeah. Anybody else from council? All right, anybody in the audience have any comments? Yes, Darcy?
If, if they have a subcommittee and it's more than three council members, don't they have to keep minutes on that?
Yeah, so we would not form a subcommittee with more than three people.
Okay. Just making sure.
Yeah, it would be, it would be subject to Open Meetings Act.
Right, okay.
All right, well, if that's it, then it is open for action. I would say we'd see who wants to be on the committee before, does that take, does it, Aaron, does that take two separate things to figure out who wants to volunteer before we actually form the subcommittee? Or can we hash out who wants to volunteer first and then take action?
You can do it in one fell swoop if you want, sir.
Okay. So Arch?
They're appointed by the mayor, aren't they?
I'm sorry?
Some committees are appointed by the mayor. We don't have to have a motion and vote on it. Do we?
I don't, I'm not clear on that.
It's listed on the, it's listed on the agenda as an action item. But technically, the mayor can appoint people to be on the subcommittee. Y'all had a significant amount of discussion on it, so it's, you know, it, it might be a cleaner record if you do that, but you don't legally have to.
Okay. Yeah, and personally, I would kind of like council to approve this subcommittee and me directly appointing. But I guess, so I know Arch, Arch, Frank and Tim, y'all three are all good for being on the subcommittee? Yeah.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Is there anybody, is there anybody else that, any of the other three that would want to be on the subcommittee?
No, I'm fine with them being on the subcommittee. I don't, I don't want to be on the subcommittee.
I'm sorry, Don?
Would you guys be consulting anyone that worked on the drought plan? Can we go back in time and look at that and have some, some of their opinions while you're coming up with your point?
Is this?
We're only talking about looking at the drought plan, you're only talking about water rates, right?
Yeah, I don't think this would, would touch the drought plan at all.
Yeah, this is just water rates.
So now, now I'm hoping that you're not going to spend a hundred thousand dollars on freezing nickels
Correct.
for consulting impact fees and then disregard them also. Seems silly, but I'm done.
Those are completely separate things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Somebody will make a motion?
All right, so I think we have our, our three volunteers, so anybody wants to take action?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we form a sub with Mr. Robbins, Mr. Devil and Mr. Collins for review of the water rates.
All right, I have the
I'll second that.
All right, I have the motion second. Any further comments? All right, place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Nay.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well and the subcommittee is formed six to one. All right. We now move into consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We are looking at number eight, approval of the May 21st, 2020, 2020, sound like Tweeter there, city council meeting minutes. Number nine, approval of resolution number 20-1844, a resolution by the city council of the city of Lago Vista, Texas, authorizing the submission application for and acceptance of the payment of funds for the federal coronavirus aid relief and economic security cares act grant. Congress approved for distribution to state and local governments and authorizing the city manager to execute documents and take actions to facilitate such acceptance. And I am going to pull agenda number item, agenda item number nine out of the consent agenda, agenda, and I will discuss that afterwards. So if we want to consider agenda item number eight, I'll do, we can do that at this time and then I will discuss number nine.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the May 21st, 2020 city council minutes.
Right, I have a motion?
I'll second.
Have a second from Dick Weatherly. Any further comments? All right. Place one.
Aye, aye, I'm sorry.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, the minutes consent agenda has been approved. All right, on number nine, I am actually going to completely pull this off the agenda for consideration. The reason being is because the interlocal agreement with the county has not been completed yet, so there is really nothing for us to consider. And I wanted to touch on this cares act for the benefit of the citizens that are, are listening in. I don't know if you're aware or not, but every major city over a certain population, I believe it was 500,000, got direct funding from the federal government and then your counties were given additional funding from the cares act. Your counties that had, that did not have cities over 500,000 within their boundaries, got funding directly from the federal government. And then counties such as Travis, who has Austin in it, they got their funding from the state or the county got it, the county got it directly. Let me back up a little bit. The cities within counties, let me see if I, how I can word this so it's understandable. Your smaller cities and counties that were under 500,000 were given monies direct from the state at $55 per citizen. Travis County received money direct from the state, which came from the federal government through the cares act at $175 per citizen totaled, based on 2019 population, Travis County was given about $61 million. About a month or so ago, the 21 mayors of the smaller cities within Travis County approached the Travis County Commissioners asking for our share of that money. We were initially requested to get the funding at the $175 per capita that the county received their monies based on. However, that was not approved by the county commissioner based on the fact that every other city within the state was, got money. Every other smaller city got funding at the rate of $55. So county commissioners approved or they tentatively approved an interlocal agreement that would provide the smaller cities with $55 per capita. For Lago, if we went with the 2019 figures, which is what we were hoping they would do, that would mean about $415,000 that we could use in, in Corona, coronavirus aid. Although the county had initially put in 2019 population estimates in their overview, when they wrote the interlocal agreement, they dropped back to 2018 population numbers. And that knocked us down from 415,000 to about 391,000. They sent us the interlocal agreement last week for us to review. We did not like the interlocal agreement. It had several restrictions that we didn't agree, that we didn't like. There was a lot to it that the 21 mayors in Travis County did not agree to, one, be in the population estimates and the restrictions, there, they put a lot of, a lot of restrictions into their agreement that are unclear. So it made it so vague that we weren't sure what we could do going forward with this money. So we put together another letter to the county commissioners that we have sent forward to them and they are going to consider it at their next meeting on the 23rd. Currently, the Travis County is telling us we have until the 24th to respond. But they, because they have decided to hear our argument on the 23rd, maybe that will change and they'll extend that. So currently we do not have a, an agreement in place. But we're working on it. However, I will say that should Travis County come back and say, no, this is it, you agreed to this interlocal or nothing. We, the city of Lago Vista staff and everything, has filled out the forms, the spreadsheets, we have our plans in place, programs to submit to the county that would show how we would use the, the funds for coronavirus relief. They have to review it and approve the program. Hopefully, hopefully they will approve our, our programs and we can move forward. The way it works, Travis County will give us 20% upfront in one lump sum to pay for things that we've already spent money on, kind of as a reimbursement. But again, it has to be approved, so we, we have money that we have spent because of the coronavirus. We're going to submit that and hopefully they will approve those expenditures and we can get that 20% upfront, cover that, the remaining 80%. We have to submit the programs again for approval. Once they're approved, then we spend the money out of our, out of our reserve fund or out of our budget. And then we can ask for reimbursement on, on that remaining 80%. And we have until, currently, we have until 30 November, we can cover expenditures. We can ask for reimbursement up until 30 November of 2020. And then we go back to the county commissioners to see if there's any funds left over to look at other expenses. So that's where we're at, at the local, interlocal agreement with the county. And I'll keep you updated as, as best as possible. So I don't know if we'll have anything by the July second meeting or not, but I'll keep you updated. Questions, comments on the interlocal agreement? All right. Anybody in the audience? I know I've briefed council and executive session on this, so they're kind of aware of this was, this was mostly for your benefit to hear what the city is doing, working with the county to try and get aid for coronavirus relief, so if y'all have any questions. Yes, Darcy?
What did you decide to use the money for? Are we all getting a refund on our water bill?
No.
Well, and I'm not watering this year.
Josh, do we want to, you want to go over what we have actually put into our plan? I, I say no, but that's not 100%. It's tricky, Darcy, before I turn it over to Josh. We have put in a, a program that would help people that are struggling to pay their water bills and stuff due to the coronavirus. But here's the tricky thing. If we grant money to people and then they use it to pay their city water bill.
It goes back into your
Does that mean, is that an eligible expense? Because one of the restrictions they put on it is that it cannot replace lost revenue. So you know, it's, it's, it's tricky, is that, is that, is that lost revenue to the city? Or, you know, so that's just one of those things that we have to try and interpret with the cares act and, and see. I will note that the county does have two programs. One of them is an HHS, Health and Human Services program to assist people with rent and utilities. But we're not real sure on how that works because again, if they go through the county, get monies through the HHS program, can they use it to pay a city water bill? You know, or can they only use it on rent and electricity since, you know, electricity is not part of the city? So it's, there's still some unanswered questions out there, but we're trying for both the small businesses and part of the city, so it's, there's still some unanswered questions out there, but we're trying for both the small businesses and individuals. Alright, Josh.
Mayor, to clarify that, Al, that three hundred and ninety-one thousand that you mentioned that potentially comes to Lago Vista at some point, if approved, our numbers have three hundred thousand of that tied into, almost split evenly, tied into citizen support, the, that would be the funds that the mayor was just explaining, and then small business support or business support, and then all of the regulation comes through US Treasury Department. So if you go onto the US Treasury Department, you can see their guidelines for the cares act funding. So you look at those two numbers being three hundred thousand, the city has expenses on medical supplies and different things to make our facilities to be more prepared for opening back up, for example, we have splash guards, protective areas in city hall, development services, the library, the golf course. We have new speaker system that was installed on the outside of the police department and city hall, so people can speak inside without having to come into the building, some signage and other things that we've used for the municipal court system, also a splash guard for the municipal court system, so we have our expenses tied in as well. And so what we're going to do, eventually, we'll submit these items, the requests to the county, let them review it and decide if it's how we can use our funds, if they come back and say that, for example, you can't have a hundred and fifty thousand in small business support grants, they have to go through the county's program, then we'll have to come back and see if there's any way that we can utilize those funds for members of our Lago community.
Yes, Paul.
I, I saw something today, Travis County was offering small business grants up to forty thousand dollars, and there's an application that has to be submitted, I think it's by July third. That sounds like it correlates a little bit to what Josh was just talking about regarding, you know, who's gonna, if Travis County is going to distribute those funds or not. I had a phone call come in, and I missed missed much of your explanation, I'll go back and watch the video later for that, but what I did hear, it sounds like this is modeled, I mean, being that the PPP loans, for example, are part of the cares act, such as this grant that city of Lago Vista is going to get, it sounds like the money you qualify for, it all has to be expensed for qualified dispersed, all has to be qualified dispersments, and anything used, you'll get, you don't have to pay back, anything else does have to go back for not unqualified expenses, correct? That, the gist of what I missed?
Well, it's going to be pre-approved, so, you know, we wouldn't really be paying anything back, because we wouldn't have anything unqualified, unless we just wanted to take that on as a city, you know?
Gotcha. Cool.
I do want to.
By the way.
I do, I did want to make one other note. I don't, however many counties we have in the state, two hundred and forty-two, two hundred and forty-nine, some?
Forty-four.
Yeah, anyway, two hundred and fifty roughly counties in the state of Texas, Travis County is the only one who has not distributed funds to their smaller cities. They're the only ones, so that's what being the other twenty mayors have kind of up against with our commissioners' court. So, yeah, I don't know, this may end up on the governor's desk or something, who knows? But we're trying, we're, we're. We're trying to to take care of our citizens as best we can. Oh, in that program you're talking about, Paul, it's through a BLC, which is Business Loan Corporation, they are handling the the disbursement for businesses through Travis County, and we can't duplicate, so if anybody, any of our businesses go and gets something through BLC, then we can't use our, they can't come to us for our portion of the.
There's been a, I just, I threw my notes away a little while ago, but there's a, the Trump administration wants to put together a one trillion dollar infrastructure bill. There's talk about that going on right now behind the scenes, and that would trickle out into that would even include broad expansion of broadband internet into rural areas, so keep your ears to the ground for talk on that. And then there's also a bill that's been put forth by a congressman or senator from Louisiana for, he submitted the bill, it's for a five hundred billion dollars. Similar to the cares act, it would provide funding to cities to help them with their lost revenues around the country. It would be to municipal, state and municipal and county governments to help them where they've, on those revenue shortfalls. So keep your eye, your ear to the ground for that as well.
Okay, and I've also heard about a package out there that would go strictly to restaurants. So, yeah, I'm sure there's going to be more things coming down the pipeline from the federal government, but I don't know, we're working on cares right now, so.
Cool.
Alright. City manager report.
Mayor, I was going to mention a number of things, but I think we've talked about most of them through the day, I'll just remind everybody listening to check the monthly reports. You have the capital improvements plan updates in the monthly reports, and that update is is pretty good in that it lists out the projects, it lists out the level of the projects, and it gives you the ones that have been completed, so check that out, and then I'll just reiterate one more time that the street projects that have been completed, we've had a lot of good comments on those. It's, the street crew has done an awesome job, and we're very excited, if you haven't driven the streets to check them out, I would encourage you just to get out, drive around town and take a look at the the new roads, it's something that's been long coming, and it's taken a lot of different people over the years to make it happen and get to this point. We're excited about seeing a new round of projects, so thanks to the council for making it happen, and for the community for for working with us as we, as we got the streets redone, that's all, Mayor.
Alright. Future council and agenda items, we meet on July second, and where are my notes? So far. I have nothing. For July second. So do we have anything that's going to be brought to the July second meeting?
Mr. Mayor.
It's not already scheduled.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Dick.
I will be bringing the semi-annual report from the golf course advisory committee. And be presenting that to the council.
Yes, Frank.
Last meeting, we said we would have a work session on water conservation, water reuse ordinances. That's, that's, that's the one that will deal with our trigger points.
Alright.
Sorry. Sounds pretty light, maybe we should cancel it. The holiday weekend.
I brought that up last meeting, and nobody said they were going anywhere.
Yeah.
That was a different, that was a different one.
Oh, that was. Yeah, that was for.
I would agree to cancel.
I don't think we'll miss it.
I'm going to be out of town, anyway.
I don't have a problem.
I'm actually unavailable for July second, so it would be Dick's meeting to run, so.
I'm, I'm for. Yeah, let's do away with it, that's fine. I'll, I'll bring the golf course advisory committee report on the sixteenth, I'm, I'm happy with that.
Perfect.
Well, that's, that's four people.
I'm fine with it, too.
Mayor, I just need to check with Roy to see what we've advertised and see if we got anything in the hopper, so.
Oh, okay.
The one application we had that would have come, they withdrew. It was an excessive welding, they chose to meet the ordinance requirements instead.
I just checked with Roy, sounds like he's got nothing.
And you're fast.
Anything else need me to ask Roy, Mayor, I can do it real quick.
No. Alright.
If you're going to do it, it takes a motion.
I'm sorry?
I make a motion that we cancel the July second meeting. I second.
I think Tim got in there quick, so motion by Dick and a second from Tim. Any further discussion? Darcy, I know you're going to miss us, but I I don't think we're going to be here July second.
That's what I was going to say, I'm like, I'm housebound right now, I'm not allowed to go to work yet, so I'm still in my house, so this is all I get. I've been going everywhere, I'm not on lockdown, I'm just on lockdown from work.
Well, and if you remember, we actually discussed about going back to face-to-face meetings for this meeting, but because of the the increase and stuff, and it just, it wasn't feasible, so I don't know, it may be August before we're actually doing in-person meetings again, maybe. But we're still in the holding pattern for now. So place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Alright.
And I'm unavailable anyway, so aye. And. We'll see you again on July sixteenth. If anybody's out wandering the streets tonight, and they see the lights on in city hall, that will be me trying to polish my speech for tomorrow, you may have to knock on the door at nine thirty to wake me up to make sure I'm attending my own rally at ten AM, but yeah, so y'all have a good night, good weekend, those of you that are in attendance tomorrow morning, I will see you.
Ninety-nine.
They called me, I called this meeting adjourned at nine twenty-five PM.
Thank you. Ed.
Yo.
Ed, if you can hear me still.